Demolishing your opponents at the game. It was really a super fun time to watch and be around and watch everybody do such a great job. And we're really pleased to have two champions in one year. I think it's pretty rare that that happens. Your talents are just incredible. We watched the game and it was really just, you know, I know many of you. You know, not only are you great champions, they're great champions at school as well. And you've done a great job and we really look forward to having you back again. And those who are graduating, we wish you the best of luck. And we're going to have a short thank you. Doug, please.
Thank you, Bob. So, hi, everyone. I'm Doug Shook. I'm superintendent. I'm the new guy on the block. Been there about six months now and I think it's pretty cool. But you've gotten two state championships in the course of six months. And, you know, as a former coach, as a former athlete, I really appreciate excellence in athletics. And I think that's what you all demonstrated. But I also appreciate teamwork and sportsmanship. And I was very proud to say that I saw all of that throughout the spring. I'm also a little bit of a numbers guy. And so if I get these numbers wrong, somebody correct me. But I think for the softball team, you all played four games because you got a bye in the first round, correct, in the state tournament? So thirty-six to four, you outscored your opponents. Does that sound right? And baseball, five games, fifty-six to five? So, you know, that's pretty impressive. I think if you've been around athletics a long time, and probably a lot of people in this room have, there's also an expression that gets thrown around in athletics. Because you can talk numbers all you want, but that expression is called the eye test. And what the eye test basically means, when you kind of see greatness, you recognize greatness. And again, I can only speak for me. I can't speak for anyone else in this room. But I was able to see a number of the games. And my eye test told me that you all were not just champions, but you were dominant champions. And again, selfishly, to, in the span of a Friday night and a Saturday afternoon, to be able to witness not just both teams achieving what you did, but to also see your colleagues on the other team cheering you on as classmates and as fellow student athletes, I think, is just something we should all be proud of. So I'm just thrilled that I got to be a part of all of it. And I'm going to turn things over now to Todd, who is going to do the formal program for tonight. So thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shook, Mr. Moore, the rest of the Board of Ed members. I appreciate all the parents who was like coming out and recognizing these fantastic young men and ladies. Kind of fitting to what Dr. Shook said and how you all know how I like to run our building. I'm going to kind of introduce by introducing my six captains, who have a word, a few words to say to everyone else. So Evan, Owen, Colby, you can come on up. Amalia, Kelly, and Daniel, with the mic, come on up. Do you need to buy hand signals from the back?
No, I think we're good.
I'll start off. I'm Owen Clancy. And on behalf of the entire team, I want to thank the members of the Board of Education, Dr. Shook, Mr. Falcone, Mr. Petronio, our coaches, the staff of District 13, and our families for their constant and continuous support. We've all been playing together since we were six. We have grown up supporting one another and have become our own family. This comes through when we are on the field and play in sync with each other. From the entire time we were small, our parents told us we were going to win the state championship by the time we were seniors. And I think that gave us the drive to keep working and working hard and stay together. What a dream come true. I'm sure I can speak for all of us when I say that we are incredibly grateful for our time together and our memories that we will last forever. Thank you again. We are blessed to live in this wonderful community.
Hey, guys, I'm Evan Fiala. I just wanted also to take a minute to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Shook, Mr. Falcone, Mr. Petronio for honoring our accomplishments. I also wanted to publicly thank my coaches and teammates. As you know, we didn't just magically appear and do this overnight. I've played with most of these kids since I was five or six. And I always remember our last game together, running down the field and winning a state championship. Also would like to thank my dad, Coach Pascarelli, Coach Byrow, Coach Garofalo, for the countless hours they put in with us in Little League, which no doubt had a huge impact on our ability to play the game at high school level. Thank you to everyone that has helped us and made this year so special. And I really hope it doesn't take another 50 years for us to win our state championship.
So I'm Colby Pascarelli. I just wanted to thank all you guys, the Board of Education, the coaches, and the family, and all my teammates for their endless support. The season wouldn't have been as good with any other group. And I don't think I would have had anyone else behind my side. I want to thank Coach Basil, Coach Brandon Basil, and obviously Coach Karen who's in Florida. But they've obviously shown their confidence in all of us and I really appreciate it. And my teammates definitely do too. And I always felt comfortable around you guys. And everything was just a dream this year. And I wanted to congratulate the softball team. And thank you again for everything.
I just wanted to thank everyone who supported us throughout our entire season, especially the Board of Ed, Mr. Petronio, our coaches, and our parents. But most importantly, I wanted to thank this team. Even though we came in this year as a very young team, every person put in the work and we learned to play together as a family. And I can't thank you guys enough for helping the three of us seniors and the seniors from last year finish what we started two years ago. I'm so proud of everyone and what this team has accomplished together.
Hi, everyone. First of all, thank you for having us tonight to celebrate our win. I want to say thank you to our coaches, my favorite coaches ever, besides my dad. My favorite coaches. I really like the past three years, but more in like a span of all of my years of softball. Like you guys have influenced like my drive and my passion for it. So I really appreciate everything that you guys have done. And to all the fans and parents and everyone that came to our games, especially Dr. Shook for coming on his time to our games all the time and watching us and supporting us and staying involved. I really appreciate that. And I know like at a game, like the fans and the energy that everyone else has affects us completely. So always having a good like fan base behind us drove us more. And thank you to the team. This is like the best team I could have ever imagined like for my senior year. There was no doubt ever from the start, from even winter workouts, that like we could do this. And I knew that like having all of you by my side was definitely like a good thing, obviously. And then most importantly, thank you to my mom and my dad for always being there for like all the years and putting in all the time. I love you guys so much. And like for all the experiences and all the wins, those are great. But especially for this last season, I really appreciate it now.
Hey, guys. So just as they did, I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Ed, the coaches, our families, the team. You guys, as Dana said, were the best team that I've ever played with. I've never had complete trust in a team before. It's very nice. I literally cannot have done it without any of you guys. Thank you, Coach Kelly. And Coach Steve, you have been our coach not only these past three years for Dana and I, but for many years. And you guys have definitely contributed to who I am as a person and a player and all of us individually as well. And I appreciate that and just as I'm sure they do. And congratulations to you guys as well.
Oh, I also forgot to say, Mr. Petronio. It's just my mind. Yeah, always coming. Keeping us updated, keeping us safe, posting your code for us.
Well, thank you very much. And I'd like to. For the main, yes, that was me. That my cell phone went out and said, "Designations in." But I just want to publicly thank the six of you as well. You waited nineteen months to get onto the field. And when you did get on the field, there were challenges for many of you. And there were challenges for many of your teammates. Not one time did any of the six of you complain, speak under your breath, badmouth something. It was always like, "What can we do, Mr. Petronio? How can we help? What can we do? How can we assist?" And that's what leaders are. That's what captains are. You fantastically will go between, between me and the rest of your team and your coaching staff. And you did that as young men and women as you are. And you're now moving on to college and you're going to make fantastic leaders at the next level in life. And I appreciate that. So I'd just like to thank the six of you and the board room. Thank you so much. And that thanks to, next, I'd like to just ask the coaches to come up. They have a few words to say. Coach T. Martino, Coach Kelly, if you can come up. And Coach Basil, if you can come up. Say something nice about Coach. Coach T. Martino.
First, thanks. Thank you to the board for inviting us and our team here. We really appreciate some of the great help and encouragement. I'm Steve DiMartino. I'm the head softball coach. And alongside me is our assistant coach and JV coach, John Kelly. Todd already gave me the warning, said, "Steve, don't take too long." Those of you that know me or don't know me. I love talking softball. You might want to take a seat. But I promise Todd, five minutes or less. It'll be five minutes or less. I promise. I just want to take five minutes just to reflect back on the season, just to kind of give you a sense. I know not all of you were there for the whole season or at the end. I don't hope you at least came to the tournament games at the end. But just to give you a brief kind of recap of the season. As I reflect back on the '21 season, I'm so proud of what our team was able to achieve in the face of some very adverse conditions to start the season. After having our 2020 season canceled due to COVID, thankfully, we were able to resume our season again in '21, and our journey began. I knew we were going to have a young team this season. I wasn't sure how good we were going to be. Though sixteen out of twenty-one players were first-year players, I quickly learned that our young sophomores and freshmen were full of energy, optimism, and talent. I knew that though they were young, they brought some great potential to our program, especially when combined with our strong core seniors. We just needed to harness that potential. As we started the '21 season, nothing was known. During our preseason, COVID hit. COVID hit and over half of our team was quarantined. And two players actually contracted COVID. It was chaotic trying to run the practices with multiple players going on and off quarantine at different times. But we made the best of it and made our way through it. We all had to wear masks while we were practicing. We used FaceTime so players who were out could see and hear what we were doing in the practices. In what became our after-practice ritual, the girls sat in a circle and as a team, wiped out every softball we used with disinfectant wipes. We did this for weeks, really fun stuff. Despite all this adversity to starting the season, I'm amazed at what this group of us was able to accomplish. After starting the season three and two with some mixed results, I sat the girls down like I do after every game and told them, "How the rest of the season goes is up to you. You need to dig deep and figure out what type of team you want to be. Do you want to be just a 5-0 team? Or do you want to aspire to something more?" It was a pivotal moment for our team as they worked through how to deal with failure and adversity. And that's when something changed, something clicked. Our practices became more focused and intense. I could see their drive and determination growing. And more importantly, we were having fun. We won the next thirteen games in a row before losing to North Grandford 1-0 in the Shoreline Conference semifinal. We finished the regular season 16-3 and playing some of our best ball of the season. And we were feeling really good about our chances in the Class S tournament as the number four seed. In the state tournament, after a first-round bye, we easily got by Wheeler 12-0 in the second round, and then Thomas in 5-0 in the quarterfinals. In the semifinals, we faced our toughest game versus number one Notre Dame Fairfield. To me, we were the two best teams in Class S. We fought a hard battle against a very good team and a very rowdy Notre Dame crowd. But we led the whole way and held off a bases-loaded threat at the bottom of the last inning to go out to win 5-2 and a bit to the championship game. The championship game ended up being a rematch of the 2019 title game, Cotton Track versus Summers for the second time. It truly was the culmination of our season. As we took the field for warmups, the girls were loose and confident. We cranked up our music. The girls danced and sang in the dugout. We played our fun little game of tossing a foam ball around to each other in the dugout before the game. You could sense what was about to happen. The game was a scoreless tie until the top of the third, when Amalia, with one out, cranked a fastball over the centerfield fence to give us a 1-0 lead and the stadium erupted. That home run gave our entire team confidence that we could do it. And the floodgates opened and we never looked back. We exploded for fourteen runs on seventeen hits. Every player on our team had a hit that game. We went on to a decisive 14-2 win and the Class S state championship. To run through the state tournament and win a state championship in such a convincing manner is a testament to our team and our players. I couldn't have scripted to finish any better if I tried. The boys win the state championship Friday night, and the girls come back and win the state championship the next day. And then the fire truck brigade escorting us into town and back to Cotton Track, with cars pulled over and honking, with people standing outside their houses jumping up and down. And Little League game stopped at Allen Brook with all the players lining the fences and cheering for us. It's a moment that I will never forget. And I'm sure the girls will never forget it again. Lastly, I'd like to give some well-deserved thank yous to the CIC and RSD 13 for working hard to let us have a season this year. To Todd for helping us work through all the COVID issues and orchestrating a very administratively challenging season. To all the parents for their fan support and driving their daughters back and forth to practice every day for 12 weeks. To the Blue Devil Diamond Club for all their volunteer work and fundraising they've done for us. To Paul Aggeri for Middlesex County Sports who gave us tremendous media coverage during our run. To Coach John who was by my side the whole season and whose positive motivation was a big part of our success. To our three seniors, Amalia, Kelly, and Dana, who are incredible leaders both on and off the field. We couldn't have done it without you and we'll miss you next year. And most importantly, I want to acknowledge and thank the 21 girls in front of us. You are a very special group. What a run you had. Watching you come together and grow individually and as a team this season has been one of the most rewarding coaching experiences of my life. I love how you each embraced your roles, no matter how large or small they were. Put team first and put your everything into every play. You represented your school admirably and truly embodied what it means to be a Blue Devil. You did it. You are state champions. Such an incredible accomplishment and one that will stay with you forever. I'm so very proud of the players and young women who have to come. I can't wait to see you get back next year.
All right, well, this is nothing less than I expected. The support that we have here is like the support we had at any game. And it's awesome. Terrific group of young men, young ladies. I want to congratulate the Lady Blue Devils for their season. It was an outstanding year. I want to say thanks to Dr. Shook for six months so far, attending the games, supporting the guys and being there. We feel your presence and we appreciate that. Mr. Moore and the board for taking the time to recognize this group of athletes is pretty special. When we talk about our team, we had ten seniors. And we have nine positions on the field. And we have some very good juniors. And eventually we brought up some sophomores and freshmen. But it's a very challenging attempt to make the starting lineup. Every senior understood and had a role on the team. It was all about teamwork and you don't succeed without teamwork. We've talked about each other's roles and, you know, it took a little time for people to settle into them, but they all understood and they all supported each other. Sports is more about building character and that's what this team was all about. We talked about a baseball IQ, being there for one another, helping each other through. And that's exactly what this group of players did. It started with our captains, our three captains. They were elected captains because I saw their ability in making people around them better. And that's what leadership is all about. And then we took the responsibility and we spread it through the rest of the seniors. So you had ten seniors, all about trying to lead this team and leave a positive influence on everybody that was a part. So when we went into games, every single player in that dugout had a role. And they fulfilled that role, whether or not it was trying to pick up signs, pick up tendencies by pitchers, charting our pitchers, charting our hitting. Everybody constantly communicated. And that's why I would say, you know, I've been here five years. Well, this was six years, obviously last year, no season. But when you talk about baseball IQ and you talk about a group of young players that know the game and help one another, make each other better, this is that team. They practiced with a purpose. And lots of times you get teams in years past that might show up for practice and just want to hang out with buddies and hit some balls and do whatever. We had some pretty productive practices. We were in and out because my players did everything that they had asked of them. And, you know, when you look back at the season, I'm not going to recap the season. I know that the support was there to see what these gentlemen were capable of doing. But we were built on pitching and defense came second. And then our hitting was, supported everything else we did. And our hitting, when we got to the tournament, was right for the picking. We hit all three categories of playing the game of baseball. And we, you heard the numbers, we did it with success. I'm most proud of these young men as people, as players, but as people. We had games where we played opponents, where we thought there were some bush things going on. You know, I didn't want our players to be that type of team. We wanted to be a team that, you know, played the game for the right reasons. And it's tough being a young high school athlete and being passionate and competitive. But to stay within that framework of who they are and who they represented, I was really, really proud of that. And going forward, you know, they're going to take that with them through college. And hopefully that is ingrained in them as a person and who they are. That they play the game with sportsmanship, that they play it the right way. And that is the thing that I think I'm most proud about. Because you can get to, you can get in the game and get caught up in that banter back and forth and lose focus on the game, but not this group of kids. They really had a purpose and they knew what they were playing for. So extremely proud, and I couldn't think of a better way to finish it. Our A.D. was outstanding, you know, Todd. Everything and anything that we could have asked for, the support and the connection that you have with the kids is awesome. I think that makes for a good A.D. And I think our guys absolutely respect you that much because they know you're there for them and you have that connection. So that's awesome. My coaching staff did an outstanding job. My son and Coach Karen really appreciated what they were able to do for us. Our parent group is outstanding. Every year, very fortunate, this town is passionate about baseball. And we always have this group of fathers that step in and help out in any way possible. And we had an outstanding group of dads this year that were ready to rake the field, go out and buy turfis if we needed turfis, whatever needed to be done to the field. That was them. That was Mr. Fiala, Mr. Pascarelli, Garofalo, Mr. Ma. I know that there's more out there. Mr. Willett. They all pitched in in some capacity to make this season special for the guys. And they did that. And I thank you for that. I thank the fire department, police department. It's incredible, that bus ride home, something that's ingrained in their memory forever. So thank you all for the support throughout the year. Congrats. Congrats. Awesome job. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, coaches. At this time, I'd like to just kind of get to where we can introduce all the players. We have a little gift for all the players on the postseason roster that with the help of Dr. Shook, I'd like to call a few names and distribute them for you. Start off with softball. Nope, I'll call their names. They'll come by to my cabin. Steven? Molly Stutzel. Cliff Ready. Claire Overton. Eddie Ma. And Paige Knapp. Two additional freshmen couldn't be here tonight, Elena Mariani and Grace Parkinson. Next, I'd like to introduce our sophomores. Allison Strang. Allison Samor. Davis Tarnkey. Natalie Ness. Jackie Kelly. Tatum Holgren. And Arianna Holahan. Unfortunately, Emily Hatchey and Abe Alfano could not be here tonight. I'd like to introduce our two juniors. Ava Morena. And Amanda Case. And last, but certainly not least, our three senior captains. Amalia DiMartino. Kelly Boothroyd. And Dana Boothroyd. Congratulations, ladies. Next, let's introduce the boys. I'll start off with Ryan Grant. Jack Frenchette. And John Carafino. Unfortunately, Mark Flansky and Shane Fitzpatrick could not be here tonight. But I'd like to next introduce Connor Willett. Alex Towah. Anthony Morrow. Jeremy Manjumali. And Ethan Kupick. Lastly, I'd like to recognize our group of seniors. I'll start off with Chris Rackey. Terrence Murphy. Alex Ma. Jack Knopka. Mike Garofalo. Chris Carafino. And Griffin Byrow. And lastly, certainly not least, our three senior captains. Senior Owen Clancy. Evan Fiala. And Colby Pascarelli. And Koby Pasquarelli. Thank you very much. So I'd just like to thank you all. What you have here is something from us as the RCT-13. We also have, what I know, the two updated banners, but I thought that would be more appropriate to put and give in front of your peers. So we're going to pick and coordinate with the coaches, and we'll also try to coordinate with the six captains, when next year, next season, hopefully in the fall, you guys can be home, and the majority of you guys can be home, and we can recognize you at a particular sporting event. Because I think the banner is something that is, it's something you see every day in the gym, it's something that you all see. Parents, some of them come in, may never see those banners, but you see it every day, and I say I think it's important to recognize you with the banner in front of your peers. So that is something that'll happen in the fall, and we'll coordinate that. As we are about to conclude and kind of go to get some refreshments, I know the Board of Education has a meeting to get back to, I'd just like to take a quick moment and thank all of you for supporting our kids and supporting our coaching staff, and really supporting and trusting the fact that they are going to do everything they did in the spring and do as best they can to adhere to what the guidelines are. And I think they did a fantastic job, and I appreciate everything and all the work that you guys have done for us in that. So thank you, thank you very much. I know you have a meeting to get back to. And Mr. Moore, thank you very much for the lovely company.